Welcome to the August 10th meeting. Welcome to the August.
There you go.
Welcome to the August 10th meeting of the Town of Victor Planning Board. We'll start, as always, with the Pledge to the Flag. First of all, the emergency exits are to the left and right in case there is an emergency. We haven't had one yet, but you never know. Restrooms are out that door and to the left, immediate left, both men's and ladies' rooms. Please be sure to sign the attendance sheet at the back of the meeting room, even if you are a developer and are presenting an application. There are business cards at the back table next to the sign-in sheet to take with you with email address and phone number for the planning department. Also on the back table is a copy of the resolutions that will be read tonight along with the agenda. Please turn off your cell phones and put them on silent. If you must take a call, please take it out in the hallway. That goes for conversations as well. If you have to talk to somebody in the room, please go out in the hallway and do it there. We had one meeting minutes. It was for July 11th. Everybody had a chance to look those over. That being the case, I have a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Al moves.
I'll second.
Scott seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those minutes are approved. That's from July 13th, 2021.
Ernie, I have to abstain because I wasn't there.
Okay, abstaining, he was on vacation then. We had one piece of correspondence, and that was from Dietrich Kirk with regard to the South Gate Hills Phase Two. Do you have any boards or committee updates? Add anything from Town Board? Oh, take your time.
This week's Town Board meeting. Sorry about that. Okay, try again. This week's Town Board meeting was just to pay bills and primarily a couple of quick resolutions on some employee adjustments from a wage perspective. The next full board meeting is the 23rd, and we had a wonderful walk last night, attended by some members of the Conservation Board, some members of your board, some guys on the Town Board in regards to the project along East Victor Road. So, very interesting perspective, and so we'll see how that all kind of turns out. You know, little mucky, huh, Al? What'd you say?
Little bit.
Little bit.
A little bit of spots.
Little bit. So, anyway, that's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Ed. Any other committee members or chairpersons? That being the case, the legal notice for the public hearings appeared in the Daily Messenger along with under review signs being posted on the subject parcels. Postcards were mailed to property owners within a minimum of 500 feet from the location for the initial public hearing date of each application. For applications carried over, please refer to the Planning and Building Office. Kim, what on next time?
So, your next meeting is going to be August 24th, starting out with a public hearing for TLC Adventures in Childcare at 119 Victor Heights Parkway. Applicant is requesting approval to operate as a childcare facility in the existing structure. You will see that on tonight's agenda, your first item on tonight's agenda for informal discussion, and then the public hearing will be scheduled for August 24th. Second public hearing will be for Historic High Point Retail Phase Three. Applicant is requesting approval to construct a 500-square-foot concrete patio and fence in front of the northern building to utilize the old Peblo Grill Restaurant. That's the blue building up at Phase Three at High Point. And then any carryovers from tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Kim. Our first item is TLC Adventures in Childcare, and as Kim said, this is not on for a public hearing. This is just for an informational presentation so that we know what we're doing, next meeting when we will have it on the agenda and hopefully approve it. Who's here for that?
Hi, Teresa Croce, TLC Adventures in the G C.
Matt with BLM Construction.
I think probably we're just here to answer questions. I know we have some information that was sent out and some questions and answers that were asked by the town. Basically, brought some prints. It's all up for comment, whatever you guys have any questions on.
Well, I guess we just want to know what you want to do.
We currently lease out the Victor Park and Rec building. The town would like it back, so I guess it's since they're leasing it or subleasing it. So, we're scheduled to move September, on or about September 1st to 7th, somewhere in that date. So, we needed to relocate the children, the school-aged children. So, we found this building at 119 Victor Heights and are in the process of demoing it, and we're here for the permit to start renovating it in order to make it a childcare center. We operate at 7444 State Route to 251 right now, and we're trying to take those school-aged children and relocate them just because of the number of children we have in the district and the waiting list. We currently have a three-year waiting list, so we're trying to help out the community a little bit and make a few more spots.
Hey, anybody from the board have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
I noticed just from looking at the satellite map, there appear to be two buildings on site. Are you in the front?
We're the rear building. So, we actually prefer that building just because it has access to the path, and there is a path that could take us over to the other daycare center through the back and cut-through behind FLCC. So, it's a pretty cool way to keep them together.
Good. That appears to be the optimal spot rather than in the front.
Right, yeah. And they probably didn't want the kids running on Victor Heights Parkway.
And will you be building a playground for them as well?
We're going to be taking some of the area. We're going to see what the kids really want right now. They don't have a playground now at Victor Parks and Rec, and they seem to be okay with that. They actually want things like basketball, and they're older children, so they want cornhole basketball nets, they want some hockey nets. So, that's what they seem to be interested in. And there is area to, there's ground to the south and then grass to the, would be to the southwest side, so we can put some area in there, and there's a little picnic area, so.
Okay. And then finally, school bus access to get the kids to and from?
School bus said they had no problem. They're all set, ready to go, and the bus drivers are pretty good. They can turn on a dime.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe?
No, I'd support this. It's certainly needed, obviously, so, and the business seems to be going well at your other location on 251, so.
We're doing okay. And I know Matt brought some prints if anybody's interested. I don't know if it's.
We did get them on, from distribution.
Okay, great.
Perfect.
Yeah. I have no other comments.
No.
So, first of all, supportive of the concept, and you certainly did a good job kind of describing what the site plan might look like versus, we have the interior depiction, but if you have anything around site plan, would be good, just again, view what's being proposed.
So, currently, there's no exterior, no site plan changes, and there's no exterior changes except for life safety. There's a couple new exterior doors going in for life safety, but no plans, there's no plans for the exterior right now. It's just an interior renovation at this point.
Just things like parking. I mean, typically, a site plan would accompany an application, so we get a good feel of what, you know, the boundaries look like.
Okay, so we'll make sure to submit that before next week's meeting, and then, I know that one of the things we talked about play area, we have utilized, there was a back workout room, I believe, it made it been used for?
Yes, yep.
And that's becoming a gym area for the children, so we have an indoor play area.
Very good. That's all I had, Ernie.
Wes, you have anything?
No, no comments. All set.
Thank you. And we'll see you next time.
Okay, sounds great. Have a good week, everybody.
Next item is the Target Drive-Up Expansion, which is, you need more time, so they pulled it for tonight. They'll be on again, I guess, next time, just if they got their ducks in a row. And next is the Mary Hornung Wildlife Sanctuary Sign. The public hearing on this is closed. This is at 240 Railroad Mills Drive. The owner is Gary Rife, tax map number 5.01-1-35.000. That's 20SP 2021 in Zone Limited Development District. Applicant is requesting approval to install a 60-inch by 30.5-inch-wide, custom routed shape sign with the proposed sign height of 60 inches. The proposed sign will designate a nonprofit wildlife sanctuary. Who's here for this? Go ahead.
Amy Catalano. I was here a couple weeks ago talking about this. So, I did get some feedback from the Code Enforcement Department, and they said that it looks as if it's more of a, which is exactly what it is, it's not, it's not for a business, it's just a sign on private property. And I did go there between, well, after the meeting, a couple weeks ago. I went there the following Friday, and it's well past the 35-foot setback. It's more like 70 feet up from the driveway, and then it's over to the left, which is that second picture. It's going to be in that grassy area. Only thing I don't know of is the sign height requirement. We had it at five feet, and I think it was too high, but I never got a number on how. We put it at four, thinking maybe that was your, that was within code.
Anybody on the board have any questions? Al?
No questions.
Joe?
No questions. I think you made one simple change of the text on the bottom for it's not open to the public, so otherwise.
You know, it can't even be seen from the road. Anybody that sees the sign is trespassing.
Or really looking hard somehow.
But what is the sign height?
I think Wes might be trying to look that up at the moment. So, we can pass it along to the rest of the board.
Well, he's looking for that.
Bottom of the sign is within one foot of grade.
Oh, so nothing about grade to top?
No.
Just the bottom?
Just the bottom.
Okay.
Scott, anything?
I don't have any questions, no.
No?
No questions or comments?
Anybody from the public having, no, that's closed. Sorry. That being the case, Wes, anything?
I don't have any further comments.
Okay, well, we've got a resolution here for the Mary Hornung. Pronounce that Hornung or Hornung?
Hornung.
Hornung. Yes, well, I had a classmate in high school that's had the same spelling pronounced as Horning.
Horning. Well, yeah, that was her mother. It's kind of, the sign's in honor of her mother, basically.
Resolution is for the Mary Hornung Wildlife Sanctuary Sign, 240 Railroad Mills Drive. Today's date, 8/10/21. Application number 20SP 2021. Whereas the Planning Board made the following findings of fact, and there are six. Whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on August 10, 2021, and identifying no significant impacts, now therefore it be resolved that the project, Mary Hornung Wildlife Sanctuary Sign, will not have a significant impact on the environment, and that a negative declaration be prepared. And be it further resolved that the application of Vital Signs Site Plan entitled Mary Hornung Wildlife Sanctuary Sign drawn by Vital Signs dated June 22, 2021, received by the Planning Board June 22, 2021, last revised August 4, 2021. Planning Board Application Number 20SP 2021 be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature on the site plan. One, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid as per fee reimbursement local law adopted in November 25, 1996. Ongoing conditions, there's only one, that the site plan comply with the Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, including Section 4, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. Do we have a motion on this?
So moved.
Al, Al moves.
Joe. Joe got it. Joe and Joe.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All set?
You all set?
Okay, thank you.
And I would remind everyone that with regard to public hearings, speakers are requested to limit comments to three minutes and will be asked to conclude comments at five minutes. Our next item is Scout Path. Public hearing on this is still open. It's 03PS 2021, Aldridge Road, Zone Residential 2, tax map number 16.00-1-2.120. Owner, De Hollander Design Incorporated. Applicant is requesting approval to subdivide the 8.84-acre parcel into five building lots ranging in size from .813 acres to 3.75 acres. The home locations will be accessed via two shared common driveways. Sketch plan was acknowledged on February 25, 2020. Staff comments sent full set of plans that include the subdivision plat and detail sheet rating utility, also an updated engineer report to the Army Corps of Engineers. And Wes was going to go over Seeker with us tonight, so perhaps we should do that first.
Well, I think maybe before we go through Seeker, since the public hearing is still open, I might suggest that maybe we open, open it to public comment if there are any, and then we can take that into consideration as we go through Seeker if there's anything further.
Sure. Does anyone from the public have any comments on this project? And then I guess we can close the public hearing.
Yeah, that would be fine, and then maybe, I don't know, Scott, if you wanted to talk a little bit about what has, what you've been able to progress since the last time you were here.
Well, okay, we've got a motion to close the public hearing. There you go.
I'll move.
Al moves.
I'll second.
Scott seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is closed. Okay, Scott, go ahead.
Good evening. I think the major changes we presented two weeks ago, we had some results of our wetland delineation. We presented our desire to not develop that area that was ultimately determined not to be a wetland, but still environmentally sensitive, and we put that in conservation easement. We moved the home house site that was proposed for that location to the rear of the site. So, I think we covered that in pretty significant detail last time we were here. But I'm available to answer any questions as you consider Seeker, and really appreciate that consideration tonight.
All right. Thanks. So, Ernie, I've just passing down part two and three of the draft EAF for considerations. And I've also prepared a draft resolution should we get all the way through this and you decide to take action on Seeker and the preliminary subdivision. So, the applicant did fill out part one of the EAF, and we got an updated version of that part one based on this redesign that we see on the, on the screen here. So, that was, that was helpful. There were a few questions in this EAF, part two, where we've indicated, yes, there's, you know, there's an impact, right? And as, just for the public's benefit, what we do in looking at the environmental assessment form here, it's a way to determine whether or not a particular project is going to have a significant adverse environmental impact. So, just because there's, there's an impact, it might be small, or maybe there really isn't an impact at all. So, this is a tool to help us get through the environmental review of the project. So, with number one, impact on land, yes, there is an impact on land, but all of the sub boxes to fill out are marked no or small impact may occur. Impact on geological features, I've indicated no. Impacts on surface water, I've indicated yes, but all of the sub boxes are indicated as no or small impact may occur. And I can get into a little bit more detail in the part three of the EAF here. I've got a little bit of a description that talks about, you know, the wetland and also the impact to the land itself.
Scott, do you have one?
Number four, impact to groundwater, there's no impact to groundwater. Impact on flooding, the proposed action may result in development on land subject to flooding. We've indicated no. Impact on air, the proposed action may include a state-regulated air emission source. We've indicated no. Impact on plants and animals, the proposed action may result in a loss of flora or fauna. I've indicated yes, but all of the sub boxes there are indicated to be no or small impact. Impact on agricultural resources, there's no impact on agricultural resources with this project. Impact on aesthetic resources, the land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or are in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and scenic or aesthetic resource, I've indicated no. Impact on historic and archaeological resources, there's no impact there. The proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archaeological resources, resource, that's no. Impact on open space and recreation, the proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or reduction in open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan. We've indicated no in that regard. Impact on critical environmental areas is no. There are no state-defined critical environmental areas in the Town of Victor. Impact on transportation is no. The proposed action may result in the change to existing transportation systems. It's not, that's not going to occur. Impact on energy, the proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy. I've indicated yes, but everything is no or small. Impact on noise, odor, and light, the proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting. I've indicated yes, but everything appears to be no or small impact. Impact on human health, the proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. We've indicated no. Consistency with the community plans, the proposed action is not consistent with the adopted land use plan. I've indicated no, as it is consistent with the existing zoning and residential land uses in the neighborhood. Consistency with community character, the project is generally consistent with the community character. So, that's kind of part two. So, we didn't have anything identified in part two as moderate to large, right? And with regard to part three of the EAF, right, I've got a little bit of a description here on impact to land. Although there are slopes of 15% or greater on the project site, the plans appear to depict that areas greater than 15% slope will not be developed. Lot five includes a proposed structure on a slope that approaches 15%, but its impact is expected to be minimal and not significant. And a little bit about vegetation removal could result in some erosion, but erosion control practices will minimize or avoid significant adverse impacts. And then impact to surface water, this is where I get into a bit of the description of the NWI wetland, which was delineated on July 23rd by, is it Deluxe? Is that how you say that? Two streams were identified, and there were a few, a couple of findings that Deluxe provided in their wetland delineation report. Their findings include that, A, the Town of Victor does not have any permits or applications regarding wetlands, however, as part of the site plan design, the town does have stipulations for buffers to some streams in wetlands. Therefore, additional consultation with the Town of Victor may be needed if impacts to aforementioned water courses are anticipated. B, according to the New York State DEC Environmental Resource Map, the site contains no state-regulated wetlands, and therefore, the project is not anticipated to require a joint application for permit as required by the New York State DEC in accordance with Article 24 of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law. Additionally, no DEC streams are mapped on the Environmental Resource Mapper as such. Jurisdictional, JAP, under DEC Article 15 regulations, is not anticipated regarding water course impacts. And lastly, a sectional, a section 401 water quality certification from Region 8 DEC office will be required if a section 404 permit from U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is needed. So, the majority of the stream that was delineated lies within a proposed conservation easement. And a portion of the ephemeral drainage on Lot 4 appears to be within an area to be graded, and the town has referred the updated plans with the wetland information on them to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and it's not expected that significant adverse impacts would result, and the town expects to obtain feedback from the Army Corps of Engineers prior to final approval. And with regard to noise, odor, and light, basically, noise, noise levels are anticipated to increase above ambient conditions during the construction period only, and that increase or that noise level would return to the normal, normal ambient conditions once construction is complete. So, that's where we are with, with the Seeker environmental assessment form. If there are any questions, I'm happy to field those, or if there's any information that's needed from the developer or the applicant, we can ask for that.
Anybody from the board have any questions? Wes?
I guess I had a couple of questions. One question is, have you confirmed that the site distances are acceptable at the proposed driveway locations?
So, I think there are site distances on the plans, correct? And so, I don't think the site distances are an issue. The one thing that is not, I don't want to say compliant, the access management standards, right? We've talked about that, and that's addressed in the draft resolution in terms of driveway separation.
I saw that, I just wasn't sure if the site distances were okay.
Yeah.
They are. And I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I guess I'm looking at a slightly different drawing. Was one of the lots near the street eliminated? Was that what happened? And there was a pond in that lot, I think, but is there a pond anymore?
There is. It moves closer to the road.
Oh.
And the area that we were going to utilize for home site is now in conservation easement, so no home site proposed there. It'll remain vegetated as is, and we'll carve out the pond closer to the, thanks for the, whoever's got the pointer, that's helpful.
That's where, that's where the pond is now?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. And that's your, that's your throttling mechanism to reduce your flows to get through the culvert under, under the highway, I presume?
Yes. All flow rates are at or lower than.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. I appreciate, I missed last time's meeting, and I was looking at something different than the prior time, so I wasn't quite sure.
Sure.
I have no more questions.
Joe?
No questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to, well, Scott understood that he basically created Lot 5 above. He didn't actually eliminate a lot.
He moved it up?
Yeah.
I see, okay.
Can you see the overall plan?
I see.
Up here?
We got one more up, and we lost one down.
Yeah.
Right.
That's all I had, Ernie.
Okay, Al, anything?
No questions.
Okay.
So, this draft resolution, Ernie, would do two things. One, it would issue a Seeker, a Seeker negative declaration, and number two, would provide conditional preliminary subdivision approval. Do you want me to read it, or?
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. Whereas the Planning Board made the following findings, an application for cluster subdivision was received on May 20th, 2021 by the Secretary of the Planning Board for Preliminary Subdivision entitled Scout Paths subdivision, requesting to subdivide approximately 8.8 acres, an 8.8-acre parcel into five residential building lots ranging in size from .813 acres to 3.736 acres. The home locations will be accessed via two shared common driveways, all within the town's Residential 2 zoning district. The sketch plan for the Scout Paths subdivision was deemed complete by resolution of the Planning Board on February 25th, 2020. It is the intent of the applicant to create five new home sites on 8.84 acres under New York State Town Law Section 278 clustering provisions, as well as pursuant to Section 184, Article 5, clustered projects of the Victor Town Code. A public hearing was duly called for and was published in the Daily Messenger, and whereby all property owners within a minimum of 500 feet of the project parcel were notified by U.S. Mail. An under-review sign was posted on the project parcel as required by Town Code. The Planning Board held a public hearing on June 22nd, 2021, and continued the public hearing July 13th, 2021, and we can also add in there that the public hearing was closed on August 10th, 2021, during which time the public was afforded the opportunity to provide comments on the proposed subdivision application. The Planning Board classifies the proposed action as an unlisted action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act regulations, and the Planning Board intends to be lead agency for Seeker review. Furthermore, a long environmental, environmental assessment form was prepared by the applicant. The Conservation Board reviewed the project on June 1, 2021, and stated the following, that the communication with homeowners on easement location and restrictions. The applicant, the application was referred to the Ontario County Planning Board under Section 278. The applicant, the application was referred to the Ontario County Planning Board under Section 239 of the General Municipal Law. On June 9th, 2021, Ontario County Planning Board reviewed the application as Administrative Review 1. In a letter dated August 10th, 2021, a supplement to the July 13, 2021 letter, LaBella Associates reviewed the subdivision plans and provided comments. Number 11, the Town Stormwater Management Officer reviewed the subdivision plans, and in a letter dated June 9th, 2021, and provided comments. Let's see, then we have the Town of Victor Highway Department reviewed the project on May 26, 21, 2021, and has no concerns at this time. The Code Enforcement Officer reviewed the subdivision plans in a letter dated June 22nd, 2021, and provided comments. The Town of Farmington Water and Sewer reviewed the application on June 18th, and June 28th, and provided comments. There was a coordinated fire service site plan review on May 24th, 2021, and provided comments. U.S. Army Corps of Engineers reviewed the subdivision plans on July 13th and provided comments pursuant to Section 278J of the Town Code, a recreation fee for each lot, or in the event of multiple dwelling, a recreation fee for each family unit in lieu of parkland shall be paid to the town before the issuance of a building permit. Pursuant to Section 278 of the Town Code, a one-time charge for new connections to the consolidated district sewer collection system shall be paid to the town before issuance of a building permit. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Victor Planning Board as lead agency has reviewed and considered Part 1 of the long EAF, application materials, public comments, and environmental record concerning the project, as well as completed the applicable parts 2 and 3 of the long EAF, and identified no significant adverse impacts, and therefore, be it further resolved that no potential significant adverse environmental impacts were identified with the proposed project using or criteria for determining significance identified in 6 NYCRR Section 617.7C1, and in accordance with 6 NYCRR Section 617.7C2 and 3, and the Town of Victor Planning Board hereby finds and concludes that the proposed action will not present a potential significant adverse environmental impact, and hereby issues a negative declaration. And be it further resolved, the Planning Board waives Section 2.7.11 of the Town Design and Construction Standards that would require a three-foot freeboard, but requires that the one-foot freeboard be provided, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board waives Chapter 55, Section 55-6, Paragraph D of the Victor Town Code that would require 440 feet of separation between driveways as part of excess spacing requirements. Be it further resolved that the preliminary subdivision application, De Hollander Design Major Subdivision entitled Scout Path Subdivision drawn by Greenland Surveying Sheets 1 through 4 dated April 2020, received by the Planning Board May 20th, 2021, last revised July 20th, 2021, Planning Board Application Number 3, PS 2021, be approved with the following conditions. So, then we have the the final signature condition. Let comments in a letter dated July 13th and August 10th from LaBella Associates be addressed, that comments in a letter dated June 22nd, 2021, from Code Enforcement be addressed, comments dated June 28th from Town of Farmington Water and Sewer be addressed, and that comments in a letter dated May 24th, 2021, from the Fire Marshal be addressed. And then, the standard conditions, ongoing standard conditions. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter.
Hey, do we have a motion on this?
I moved.
Joe Logan moves with a second.
A second.
Joe Lindbeck seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
I have nothing. Okay. What's that?
A good night, thank you.
The next item is Auction Direct Autobody Shop. This is 21SP 2021, 1093 to 1099 McMinn Road. It's Zone Commercial/Light Industrial. Tax map number 28.00-1-35.000. The owner is Donald Stokum. Applicant is requesting approval to remove the proposed stockade fence that was proposed between the residence and the shop on the original site plan from 1994. The residential house will not be used for residential purposes, but for storage. Staff comments, if the if the Plating Board requests the applicant to construct the fence, they will not have to go to the ZBA. If the Planning Board decides applicant may remove the fence from the site plan, then the applicant must submit an area variance modification to the ZBA. Hi.
I'm sorry, Alan Friedman with Auction Direct.
Okay.
And we actually purchased the property today, so it's ours, and all we're looking for permission to do is not put up a fence. It hasn't been there since 1994. We own the house and the building. It's a non-residential house. Talked to Donald Stokum about it. It was originally intended to keep the house private from the business, but since that's no longer a concern, it's a non-residential property, we just prefer not to put a fence up at this time. It's never been there.
Okay, any comments from the board?
I haven't got any relative to the fence, per se. I drive by that fairly frequently, and right now, a lot of the space behind the shop is just random cars sort of willy-nilly, and you indicate that you're going to be parking as many as, what, 12 to 20 back there? Are you going to?
That's not our, we just, we just took ownership of the building today, so the stuff that's still there is still done.
There'll be more.
Yeah, it's, he's, he's still in there cleaning up, so he'll be had the trailers leaving. That's his trailer that's there that's leaving. The boat is leaving, so all that stuff will be cleared out. I mean, he's, he, once in the next week or two, he'll get everything out of there, and we're not even doing anything with the house probably for another three or four months. We have stuff in storage, and yeah, we're just gonna start cleaning the place out tomorrow and using it. We're not branding it at all. It's not gonna have an Auction Direct sign on it at all. It's not open to the public. It's just 100% for our internal purposes, so with that said, and just, like I said, just looking to get the fence not put up.
Thank you. I have no issue with removing the fence. I was curious about that.
Yeah, no, that's all, that's all it is, but all that other stuff is his, and we'll keep, our cars are ever turning. He sold cars out of that building, so there are always cars lined up in the front. Ours are gonna be ever turning because there's gonna be retail cars and customer cars, so we're not having any long-term, you know, we're not gonna sell out of that building, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, anything?
I don't have anything.
No?
No, nothing.
What's that? And I don't either. This seems pretty straightforward. It's never been on the plans. You do have to go to the ZBA. So. Anybody from the public have any comment on this? That being the case, I'd have a motion to close the public hearing.
So, move.
So, move.
Second.
All seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, we have a resolution. It's for Auction Direct Autobody Shop, dated today's date, 8/10/21, 1093 to 1099 McMinn Road, Application Number 21SP 2021. Whereas the Planning Board made the following findings a fact, and there are six. Whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on August 10, 2021, and identified no significant impacts. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the project Auction Direct Autobody Shop will not have a significant impact on the environment, and that a negative declaration be prepared. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the application of Site Plan Entitled Auction Direct Autobody Shop, drawn by Raymond Phillips, dated August 1, 1994, received by the Planning Board June 21, 2021, and 28, 2021, Planning Board Application Number 21SP 2021, be approved with the following conditions. And there are conditions to be addressed prior to the Chairman's signature on the plan. And one, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid as per fee reimbursement local law adopted November 25, 1996. Two, the comments from Code Enforcement Officer dated July 21, 2021, and August 3, 2021, be addressed. Three, the zoning board of appeals resolution dated May 2, 1988, a modification to the area variance is required. Ongoing conditions, there's only one, that the site plan comply with the Town of Victor Designing Standards for Land Development, including Section 4. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. Any motion? Move. Joe Lindbeck moves, a second.
I'll second.
I'll go into seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Good luck with the Attorney Board of Appeals side. Know why they have to go through all that? I know. Next agenda item is Heinz Pole Barn. This is 24SP 2021, Zone Residential 2. It's at 6700 Woodbrook Road. Tax map number 1.03-1-20.080. Owner is Kenton Heinz. Applicant is requesting approval to construct a 35-foot by 60-foot post-frame pole barn for non-commercial use. Total square footage is 2,100. Staff comments, we're waiting for LaBella, and I think we have it right. No, we don't, never yet. Exempt from Ontario County Planning Board, we don't have that yet either.
He's exempt. He's exempt from Ontario.
Okay. Wes, are there any comments from LaBella?
No, we did take a look at the, at the letter, or the project submission, and we saw comments from Code Enforcement, but we didn't have anything further beyond that.
Great, thank you. Anything from the public? Any questions or comments about this project? Yep, step forward. Have your name and address.
My name is John Small. I live at 6702 Woodbrook Road. I'm actually the neighbor to the left there. Northwest. So, I, you know, I talked with Ken about the project, and I knew that he was gonna do a pole barn. But what I didn't know is the scale of it. I've been, my wife and I moved to Victor 32 years ago, and where we are, there's a big, long tree line in the small development we are in. And there's also a swale there that the town put in to take away water. So, that swale is supposed to take the water around to another lot into a pond. So, I don't know, you know, that's another issue. But what I'm not sure about is that most of the lots that we, in this small subdivision, are like an acre, acre, and Kent's is four acres. This, obviously, for me, it will be right in the way. You will see this in our backyard. Because it's actually, it's 2,100 square feet. It's bigger than my house. It's almost, my house is 2,200 square feet. It's 2,100 square feet. So, it's, it's pretty big. I think the scale of it is probably too big. I know Ken wants it. I know what it wants, but I'm just not sure that it fits into the character of the development. There are, I think, three other people that have bigger lots, but most of the people have about an acre. And so, it kinda, it's gonna stick out there. I guess the biggest thing is that I just, you know, I'm concerned about the size of it, what it's gonna look like. If it does go forward, I certainly would want to have, I mean, it's gonna be in our backyard. We got a pool there, whatever, and deck and stuff, and that's what we're gonna see, and if, you know, if somehow it could be scaled back a little, and maybe some, make sure that there's some, some kind of trees and things put in there, so I don't have to see it. I mean, a 60-foot barn, if somebody came to you and said they were gonna put a 60-foot barn next door to you, 35 by, I mean, you'd say, oh, no, it's gonna be, I'm gonna see it right from my backyard. So, it affects me probably the most of any of the people in here. I know one of the other gentlemen here from our subdivision this year. So, I, you know, I don't know what to say other than that. I just, I just think that it's, it's probably, it's too big, and it's gonna impact the character of the, it will change the 15 lots that are there, and I just think it'll look out of place, but you know, I know Ken wants to, his purpose for doing it, he wants to put some cars and stuff. That's up to him. But to me, I just, I don't think it's right.
Okay, anybody else have any comment or questions? All right, anybody from the board? I went through that, didn't I?
Nope, not yet. I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
You submitted a survey map, and you show a little rectangle that represents the building.
Yes.
But I'm not sure that this is really a site plan to the extent that I could look at this and understand topography and drainage relative to the location where you're proposing the building. How do we, or how are we supposed to know as a planning board that this is a good location, a justifiable location from that standpoint?
So, I don't know exactly what you're usually looking to consider, but the way my lot is set up, if you look at the easement lines, that is from the easement back is all kind of like rough, high grass, and then in, in, of the, inside of the easement is cut grass. It's basically what I cut and mow. So, that's my maintained yard. It's perfectly flat. There's no trees, there's no greenery. It's already part of the yard that I maintain. There's, there's no drainage. There's no, like, water features or anything of that sort. It's just mowed grass.
Relative to what the gentleman said before, is there a swale or something like that going through?
I don't know what that word is, what it's swale.
There's a swale there.
If you're gonna speak, come up.
Before didn't keep it.
No, no, wait, please, come forward.
Oh, it swelled that thing, but he kind of
There's a swale that runs, runs in the springtime. It turns into a small little stream. Runs behind my house, and runs towards Ken, and it's supposed to go into a pond.
That's gotta be
And what happened is that the guy before it didn't keep it clear, which he should have, and so the water backs up to me. So, what does happen is that the level of the land definitely goes down. It continues to go down. So, I don't know.
And easement, is that what you're talking about?
Well, that's on the property line, way in the property line, where the tree line comes along.
I've never seen any
Well, there is. If you can go back in, you can find it.
In the, in the high growth?
Yeah.
This is well inside of the high growth.
Well, but but behind you, going down that tree line, there's a, it's filled in with trees, and the water backs up in there, backs up in my property.
Like that, that's a different thing.
Well, that water's supposed to go, continue on that, on that swale. It's supposed to go to a pond around to another neighbor's pond, but
I can handle that. I'm just, this doesn't affect that feature. I can handle that. I wasn't aware of that till this moment, but this isn't in that area as far as I'm aware. This is in the part of my lawn that I mow.
Anyway, I just
I'm happy to address that. I was unaware of that before. I moved into this house back in September, September of this year, so, or September last year, so I've never heard of that feature before until this moment.
I guess I had one more question, which was, do you have any intention of landscaping around the building to buffer its appearance?
One of the questions the Conservation Board had was just how visually it was going to look, and when I had an architect originally working on it, he had put a lot of trees, and he put a driveway in, and it seemed overly disruptive, in my opinion. I wanted to make sure the building looks good, but the back of my house has a fire pit. We have a deck. We have, you know, all of the extra landscaping features I need. So, I wasn't planning on putting, really, any landscaping or driveway up to it. I didn't want to have a driveway bisecting my front yard because that would look ridiculous.
Okay, I can understand the driveway. I can also understand your neighbor's comment. I have no more questions.
Go.
Do you guys have the satellite image of it, just so you can see really where?
Oh, yeah, Joe's got it.
Okay, because if you look at the satellite, it's not in his backyard. It's off of his backyard quite a bit, like probably 200 feet. Yeah, so.
Wes is gonna share the satellite up on the screen for you.
It's a good 200 feet east of his backyard. And worth noting, I specifically showed, I chose this size and height, wall height, because my wife didn't want it to be too visually disruptive in our backyard, so I know that, like, the maximum height is 30-something feet with approval. If I were to have gone with a size that's appropriate without Planning Board approval, the maximum peak height would have been 15 feet average between eve and peak. This is 17 feet, so it's actually only two feet higher than what would have been allowed without Planning Board approval.
Yeah, once you get to 2,000 square feet, that's needs approval.
Oh, yeah, exactly. That's why. Oh yeah, exactly, that's why, I'm just talking specifically height.
Could you use a pointer? I've got a pointer here if you don't, if there's not one up there. Oh, there is? Okay.
Okay, so, house is right here, building would be right there, and then John's house is right there, so he's got like a fence right here, there's a couple trees right here, and the building would be way back there. It's pretty far, it's not quite his backyard, you know, his backyard is right there, it's way over there, in my opinion.
So it generally slopes down towards where the barn is going?
I wasn't aware of that, but I mean, John, John knows the neighborhood better than I do.
You have a sense of, from your house, the land drops away, falls away from the house, do you think, to the tree line?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
You said it's pretty flat, so it must be...
Yeah, I would say so.
Gravel grade, but still lower.
Yeah, I would, I would say so.
Okay. And the backdrop would be the woods, I mean, the trees are much taller than what you're doing.
Exactly, so, yeah, the building would go right there. That's easement back here. This is all, this, the first 30 feet right here is also easement. I've been told, I can't build back there, but yeah, the building is basically right there.
Wes, could we go to the survey map again, please?
The survey map?
Yeah, he talked about the easement, it's the one that, with the, you know, the barn location.
Yeah, Eyncor's got a pretty good layover, layout of it.
So, the tree line is essentially that, that strip of conservation easement?
Actually, the tree line is, the easement goes in, how do I describe it? The easement stops in the tree line. I could actually go back about 10 feet into the tree line before the easement begins.
Okay, so, tree line is closer than that easement?
Yeah, the tree line would probably be right around here.
Yeah, okay. So to me, you're tucking the barn into the corner of your lot, because the rest of it's woods.
Yeah, it's a flat spot that's not being used, and the previous owner said he had hoped to put a barn there as well, which is a big part of why I purchased the house, because it had the land and the flat space for it.
So, in the image that you showed of the barn that you're going to build has a lower portion, and then it goes up?
Oh, just one floor.
I guess I'm saying...
Oh, yeah, yeah, two sections, two sections.
Two sections, so the lower section, is that gonna be pointed towards your neighbor's house?
They're gonna be, you wanna pull up the satellite? So the building will be facing perpendicular to my house.
So the long end will be towards your house?
Correct, yeah, the face, yeah, the face of it will be perpendicular to my backyard. I'm not gonna have any floodlights, because I know that would not be well-received, so there's not gonna be like any lights that would ever be shining heavily in my neighbor's yard, because that's disrespectful. But for the most part, its purpose is to store vehicles seasonally, things I don't drive in the summer, things I don't drive in the winter, lawn mowers, seasonal, snowboards, skis, stuff like that. I'm not gonna be running like an auto shop out of it or anything like that, it's just, maybe I'll change my brakes, you know, once...
Have to do any improvements on your lot to drive vehicles across it?
I've actually tested it out, it's, so that was one of the questions Conservation Board had, was if I'm going to be putting a driveway, and, or how, the only way that a driveway would work would be right here, and that would look awful, and there's also underground irrigation right here, so it would just be kind of prohibitive anyways. So for the rare instances I'm going back there, I would just drive right across from there, on that path.
That's all I had, or?
Yeah, Al?
I think just the only thing to maybe address the, your neighbor's concern is, you know, two or three well-placed evergreens on the property line?
Yeah, I mean, if John's concerned, I'll, you know, I'll line this thing up with shrubs if he wants, or, I mean, I'm fine with that, I just didn't want to be intrusive, I don't, I mean, John, whatever you want visually, I'm willing to do that, that's fine.
Sometimes we find that a cluster of trees strategically placed works great, and even sometimes better than a line, along, so you guys can talk about it.
Landscaping, I have no problem doing whatever I need to do, you know, again, I'm keeping the height at 17 feet to try not to be some towering behemoth, the original one I designed was like 25, and that was just too much.
Yeah, but other than that, I have no concerns with what's being proposed.
Any other comments or questions from the public? I guess we can have a motion to close the public hearing.
I move.
Logan moves, second. Scott, harder seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. I just have a couple of things for you.
Yep.
You've seen the building department comments?
Yes, yeah, yeah, you go through those, or do you guys have them in front of you?
Yes.
I have two.
Okay, I don't know if everyone had seen them or not.
Yeah, they all have them.
So the key question he had was, what's my access path, or do I plan on doing driveway?
You already addressed that, you're not gonna have an access path.
Drainage, I'll put gutters on it.
Just electric is the only utility, right?
Only electric utility, no, no gas.
And the outside lighting?
Like porch lights, no, no floodlights, you know, just enough that like if I'm, if I'm coming out there, it'd have like, you know, some 60, 60-watt bulbs on the sides, but no, no floodlights. Because again, I don't want, I don't want light beaming into his, the back of his house.
Dark Sky compliant?
What is that?
Standard, means the...
You can get information from...
Woman's downward.
Oh, oh, yeah, sure.
Town Planning Department. Yeah, we don't, we don't approve any uplighting?
Oh, okay, yeah, I can do that.
Here we go. Anybody have anything else before I read the resolution?
I just have a question, assuming that we go forward with an approval on this, how did you want to stipulate the landscaping?
We're gonna have to put it in the approval.
We have a...
If you want, do you want like, visually obstructive landscaping, or, you know, whatever you need it to be, it's fine.
I guess strategically placed landscaping between the neighbor's house and the barn. I don't want to dictate what you put on, to make sure you have...
I'll work with John, it's...
To act as a visual buffer.
Yeah, that's, I like that.
What's that?
So, to, that, I'll put this. Mr. Heinz will install landscaping to act as a visual buffer to the barn from the adjacent neighbor's property. And I don't know whether it needed, to me, it doesn't matter whether it's right near the barn, or whether it's near the lot line, but it's how you want to set up your property.
Oh, make it look good.
Is the amount of landscaping and the extent of the landscaping to be determined then by others?
I don't know if it makes sense to say mutually agreeable with the adjacent landowner and Mr. Heinz. It's kind of open-ended, and I kind of hate to put it that way.
I don't know, there may, there may not be an amount of landscaping that is satisfactory and that's, that's our concern.
I got applicant to install appropriate foliage, screen the barn from neighbors. Does that sound all right?
Yeah, I guess you could say within the line of sight between the house and the proposed barn.
Barn, screen the barn from the neighbor's line of sight. Anybody have anything else?
No.
No, good.
That's, that's fine with me.
Yep, then I'll read the resolution. Mr. Heinz Poll Barn, 6700 Woodbrook Road, Bay State 81021, application number 24 SP 2021. Whereas the planning board made the following plans, a fact, and there are eight. Let me see, do we have a LaBella letter?
No LaBella comments.
Okay, we'll take that out then. And it'd be number seven, where it says LaBella Associates reviewed the site plan in a letter dated, but it's blank, so I take all of number seven out. Whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on August 10, 2021, and identified no significant impacts, now therefore be it resolved that the project Heinz Poll Barn will not have a significant impact on the environment, and a negative declaration being prepared. Now therefore be it resolved that the application of Kenton Heinz's site plan entitled Heinz Poll Barn received by the planning board July 8, 2021, planning board application number 24 SP 2021, be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature of the site plan. Number one, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid as per fee reimbursement local law adopted November 25, 1996. Two, that we take this one out, because that refers to the LaBella letter. And number two then will be, the applicant is to install appropriate foliage to screen the barn from the neighbor's line of sight. And the ongoing conditions, one, that the site plan comply with the Town of Victor Design Construction Standards for Land Development, including Section 4. Two, that a building permit be obtained before the start of construction, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board's secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. You guys have anything else, or any comment about the resolution?
If one...
Okay, so we have a motion.
So moved.
Joe moves.
Second.
Joe Limbach, second, all approves.
Aye.
Okay. Next is Victor Health and Wellness Plaza. It's 25 SP 21, 2021, zone commercial, it's at 7249 State Route 96, tax map number 15.00-1-13.100. Owner is Jason Tannery. Applicant is requesting change of use to convert the existing structure, the former railside market, marketplace into space for four tenants. The existing building is approximately 8,000 square feet. Okay, staff comments are waiting for Ontario County and LaBella comments. So we don't have a resolution here tonight, but, because we need the county comments, but go ahead and present something to us.
Good evening, Tom Frommer, MRB Group, and Dan Hobza, architect for the project, representing Jason Tannery. As you've indicated, the owner is looking to change this building from the Railside Market Cafe to Victor Health and Wellness Plaza. The proposed change in use, from the grocery store to a healthcare facility, which would primarily start off as a dental facility in the top-left corner, and then it would be developed into three additional tenant spaces. The proposed use is permitted under the town code, under healthcare and medical use. The 8,000-square-foot building, as indicated, would have a total of 10 tenants, is what we're thinking right now. The parking is adequate on-site, there's 73 parking spaces with three ADA parking stalls. Lighting is not proposed to change, as well as the other site amenities. We did receive comments, we have addressed those comments, we did receive LaBella's comments today, and they spoke in regard to the secret determination, which we confer a Type 2 action. Also talked about lighting, which we aren't planning on changing. The other comments was in regard to the drive-thru, which would be on the top-left corner. At this time, the owner doesn't have plans for that right now, we're gonna leave it as is. It may be an outdoor space, but we, we're still working through those details.
A little comments from the board first, start at the end, Al, anything?
Oh, no comments, it's good to see you. I think it's a good reuse of the property, and consistent with the adjacent property as far as type of use, so I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, Tom, you said seven or eight new tenants? I don't recall.
Four new tenants.
Four new tenants, okay, I thought you said there was more than occupants.
Maybe, you heard me talking about the parking, parking stalls, 73 parking spaces, but there are, the primary initial tenant would be the top-left corner, which would be for a dentist's office, and then the three additional spaces are just kind of placeholders.
I'm looking at the floor plan here, so, no, I echo Al's comments, it's good reuse. Nothing else.
Well, this has been vacant for some time, so...
It has been.
For one, I'm glad to see something going in there. And this area is becoming a regular wellness line of buildings all the way up and down. There's nothing wrong with that. Scott, anything?
I guess it's just cosmetics really that you're doing to the building, and you're not, you're not increasing the size of the parking lot, or adding on to the building, that you're just reusing it and resigning it, and I assume doing the, the floor plan to go along with the new tenants.
That's correct, Scott, yeah. We did provide a rendering of the potential sign locations, just kind of locating them tentatively, but that would come back with a sign package once, once decided upon.
Okay, well, I think it's a great reuse as well, I've noticed that it's vacant too, so I welcome the change.
I am curious, when, when the two buildings went up, Railside and the neighboring building, they're sharing a common driveway, and we anticipated the amount of traffic that the current building, the medical building, would have. Is your traffic load gonna be bigger than the, the market had you anticipate, and will that driveway be, need to be modified at all to accommodate any of that?
I think the driveway is adequate for, for the proposed need, so...
Okay, thanks.
Invited from public, have any comments about this project? Wes?
So we did get a letter out today with regard to Seeker, Tom did mention that it appears this is a Type 2 action, which basically means that per the Seeker regs, classification is Type 2, is already presumed to not have a significant adverse impact, so classification just concludes the Seeker process. Beyond that, he shared some details on no changes to the lighting, and drive-through lane's gonna remain the same for now, and that's it.
I guess we can have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move.
Logan moves, two seconds.
A second.
Galena seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Do not have a resolution for you tonight, we're waiting for the county comments.
Understandable, so, we'll be back.
And the next item is sketch application, Southgate Hills, Phase 2, 04 SK 2021, Zone Residential 2B, tax map numbers, 28.04-1-48.000, 28.04-1-44.111, 28.04-1-44.200, and 28.04-1-45.000. Applicant is requesting acknowledgement of a complete application to develop under the clustering provisions, 29 lots on 58.3 acres, including four separate parcels. This will be the first step of a major subdivision, and only acknowledgement of a completed application will be considered at this meeting. Applicant received approval from the Town Board on July 26, 2021, to modify the existing residential overlay District A development, overlay District A development criteria to a residential overlay District B. The staff comments are waiting for LaBella comments, and was also sent to the Fire Marshal and the Conservation Board.
Hi, good evening, Link Sweetrock with BME Associates. Also with me tonight is Jerry Watkins from BRW of Grease OLC, who is the developer looking to build on the project. Like you talked about, we were here earlier, we were here last month in July to discuss the overlay district change, which the Town Board has now acted on, changing the overlay district from the residential A to the residential B overlay district. So tonight, we're here to discuss the sketch plan for the next phase, next part of the process. So the proposal is for 29 total lots on 58.3 acres of land on four separate parcels. The area is located along East Victor Road and north of Bowton Hill Road, and the four different parcels are being developed sort of separately. The four, the parcels along Bowton Hill Road, we're proposing for estate lots, which will be on septics, there's water there, so they'll each have their own water service, and the lots are, are pretty large, and we're, we're maintaining the, the tree areas as much as... And the lots are pretty large, and we're maintaining the tree areas as much as we can and trying to propose the lots in the open areas that are there sorted out today. Those lots would just be, would just be developed as sort of per the zoning, and then they would have open space areas delineated on the sketch plan. The other parcel with the cul-de-sac off of East Victor Road is the first phase that we're proposing, which is 15 lots, and proposes a cul-de-sac there with lots, stormwater management. We would connect in the sewer that's being constructed with Blument, so that is served by gravity sewer, as well as the parcel on the other side. So we've clustered the lots to the area where the sewer is available, and proposing the lots with the same standards as the lots that we constructed in Southgate Hills, which is adjacent to the property to the north there. So those are the, this would be the next phase of Southgate, and the lots are consistent with what was proposed and developed there. The sewer, like I said, is going to be available. It's being brought down East Victor Road for Blument. The water would be, would be constructed to serve the lots. We're showing a sidewalk along the one side of the road, as well as, once we get into the preliminary and final design, we would propose landscaping and lighting plans. We're also showing a area there near the trail that we were offering. We were in discussion with the town and wanted to get the town's feedback on the town's interest in having that piece of property next to the trail there, for whatever purpose you're looking for, and that's part of the discussion we want to have tonight. We got quite a bit of feedback from town staff about that. So we've got quite a few comments and things, so I think, I think what we're looking for tonight is just to, to discuss sort of what the planning boards would like to see with the sketch plan moving forward and the next steps of the design process. So I think that's pretty much it. Like I said, Jerry's here to help answer any questions we have. We do acknowledge that part of the comments that we've seen are about upgrades that need to happen to the pump station before this can happen, so we'll be working, trying to work and coordinate with LaBella on that going forward. We understand that that, we need to figure that out as we move forward with the design process. So I think we're here to listen to any questions or comments, and.
Just note, this is not a public hearing. This is only to determine if the sketch plan is complete. Public hearing will be conducted at another meeting. Everybody's aware of what we're doing here. Ask Wes first. Any comments on this one?
Yeah. So let's see. We did issue a letter today, and for Seeker, just in general, it's probably not too relevant to the sketch plan discussion, but this might, I'm thinking this might be a type-one action, so when they submit their preliminary application, they'll submit the appropriate environmental assessment form. Pump Station 7, we've got Mike Chaffrin investigating and looking into what required improvements would be needed. So we're waiting to hear back from him on that. The parcel A, which is the small triangular piece immediately adjacent to the trail, I did have a conversation with Brian Emelson. We talked over the sketch plan drawing, and he was hesitant. I know, it looks like he submitted his own comments. What I heard from Brian was that he was hesitant to take acceptance of that parcel due to his concerns regarding future maintenance and lawn mowing there, given, and the number of parking spaces he thought was more than what they needed at that particular location. So I think maybe some further coordination might be needed, as Link indicated, between the Parks and Recreation Director and, you know, the future of what that triangular piece looks like, and whether or not the town would consider taking it in dedication or whatnot. That can be worked out. And then maybe installing a sidewalk between, and I think Brian mentioned in his comments, a path or sidewalk between that loop road and the path right along the east side of East Victor Road, provide some pedestrian connection there beyond just the shoulder of the road. That would be nice. And then I guess I wanted to ask about the Phase 1. I understand from Link's comments tonight that Phase 1 is the cul-de-sac area with 15 homes, and will the preliminary application, do you know yet if your preliminary application is going to be all of what we see on the sketch plan? Or maybe is that going to be phased as well?
So, you know, we wanted to do the sketch plan to show you overall sort of the density that, you know, for the overlay district and everything. Right now, the applicant, the owner's intent is to just, they would like to just come with a preliminary final for just those 15 lots, because there are some other things that that are happening that that might end up being different or changing. But the real important thing to them is to do the next 15 to keep going with the inventory from Southgate. So we would like to, and I've just started conversations with Kim on that, on what, you know, it might be something like what we did at Southgate 1, where we showed the whole, all the lots and the density, just so that it was clear this was how we came up with everything, because I think we did that with Southgate 1, and when we showed lots in the golf course and things. And then just move forward with preliminary final on the 15 lots. I think we'll have to work that out. This is the, this is the total of what we're looking to do, but the important thing, and I guess I'd look for the board's input, is the important thing that they want me to move forward with and design is the 15 lots in the cul-de-sac. And, you know, we understand we might have to come back, or we might have to, you know, do something different down the road. If we have to figure out the best way to hinder Seeker, I'll do what, you know, we can figure out what we need to do with that and things like that. But I think from a design standpoint, we'd like to just focus on the 15 lots.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll go to the board. Joe Limbuck, any questions?
Well, I'm looking at the Parks Department comments on the access to the Auburn Trail, and how that would be incorporated, or what are your thoughts about incorporating the different sidewalks, et cetera, that they show in their, the last three or four bullets? Proposed conservation easement from Lot 1 to 14, and 12 and 13 for a future trail. Sidewalk from 14 to 19.
Yeah, I mean, I think our intent would probably be to try to meet with them during the preliminary plan design and see what makes sense for them. I think we're open to do them. I'm speaking for Jerry's behind me, but, you know, I think we would probably, I just received these comments, so I think we would look to meet with them and incorporate them into our preliminary design.
Thank you.
I think the conventional drawing that you did provides a good contrast to what you're proposing. I think, when I first looked at your drawing, I wasn't quite sure of how things fit together, and whether it's better under a cluster provision as you're showing, but I think, I think what you're showing makes sense. I think the contrast with multiple frontage lots on Bowton Hill Road comparatively certainly steers me in the direction of what you're proposing. So I think, I think I like it. That's my comment.
Joe, Logan?
I'm struggling with some of the changes requested or proposed for the lot standards. You're looking at, instead of a minimum lot size of 25,000 square feet, 11,000 square feet? That seems very small, and it's not.
Again, it's consistent with Southgate, the first phase.
11,000 or 11,000?
It says 11,000 square feet, proposed lots 5 to 29. Yeah.
They're, yeah, they're 80-foot wide, 120 deep, so 11,000 square feet. 30 front, 8-foot side, 40 rear, and then a 5-foot driveway.
You said it's consistent with Southgate?
It's the exact, it's the exact lot standards and units that they're building in Southgate now.
Yeah, I struggled with those two. What kind of space are you having between buildings? Getting a 20-foot offset or a 10-foot offset from lot lines?
We're doing 8-foot sides, so.
How does the fire department feel about that? Southgate the same way?
Southgate the same way.
8-foot sides?
Yeah, so 16-foot between.
But you're meeting Level B overlay, right, for basically one house per two acres of total developed land?
Correct. It went from 19 to 29 total, when we went from the one per three to one per two.
Yeah.
So we gained 10 lots, basically, but, you know, they're shown on both sides of the road. We're only showing the four estate on Bowton Hill.
Yeah, are you going to be able to put any sidewalks along the houses in the, these two, I guess it is, one up higher? Or even on the cul-de-sac? Then to tie into the hiking trails, you'd have to have something along the road, I would think.
You want to talk that, you want to, I'll let you talk sidewalks?
Yeah, we, there's plenty of room with the.
We have your name, please.
Jerry Watkins Reedman, with the triangular piece there to get up to the walking path, so. And these lots, we've had pretty good success at Southgate. We've got like three lots left, and the lot sizes are proving to be pretty desirable.
Nothing more at the moment, thanks.
No questions?
Anything, Wes?
Nothing further, but I did, I guess, well, maybe there is something further, if I've got a but. I was just measuring some of the, some of the lot sizes in Southgate 1, right, and they're about 12,500, 13,000, or, yeah, 13,000 square feet. There might be some as small as 11,000, I'm not sure, but just for comparison purposes.
But they have 80-foot lot widths at Southgate 1?
Yep, yep.
It's 80, it's 80-foot at the setback, so. Some of, when you get in the cul-de-sac, you know, you get wider as you get back, and.
It's actually narrower where the edge of pavement is.
In that instant, in the cul-de-sac areas, right?
Yeah, it just seemed, acting pretty tight.
But I think if you go out and, you know, take a look at Southgate, you can, you know, get a feel for, it's the same, same type of home, it's the same, it's the same market that we're looking to do for the next, this is basically what they're looking to do to continue it.
Saw it yesterday.
Yeah.
Well, actually, Google Earth has a pretty good aerial of it. It's up to date within a couple of houses, it looks like.
Yeah.
It's got a couple foundations going in, and the second and fourth lots in, but otherwise, most of the lots are built. I think you're missing one, two, three, four, five, maybe six on Google Earth, so. And those are the same setback 30 feet as well?
Yeah. We held the same, the same standards. That's our intent. Once we get into preliminary, you know, it might change a little bit once we get, once we get into all the math and such, but.
So you're going to put a sidewalk on one side or the other of the cul-de-sac? And then also the walk-through, the drive-through?
What do we do with sidewalks?
You have sidewalk on the first phase. I'm staring at it.
One side, yeah.
I would say you certainly should have one on these other sections. And they tie right in to Auburn Trail, of course, on that first phase. I'll be interested to see how you make the connections with sidewalks and things to the Auburn Trail on this one. The detail that will come through on preliminary plans, I'm sure.
Yep. Anybody, anything else before I read the resolution?
Can you just address the board?
This is not a public hearing.
I realize that, but I just want to be sure that they know that Victor Hiking Trails is very interested in getting the people off the road as they approach the trail.
Well, step up, step up.
Sure, here you go.
Name and address.
Just for the record, David Wright, 33 Ketchum Street, and also chairman of Victor Hiking Trails. Apologize to the board for getting the notes from Brian late. We got the packet a little late, and we just had a discussion with Brian and Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee and Victor Hiking Trails last Thursday, put together some quick comments, and I'm realizing it's just a sketch plan at this time. But I wanted to just make sure that the developer got those comments, and we'll address them as they move forward. And we're certainly want to cooperate with the developer to make it pleasant for the new residents to use the trail. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, a resolution here. Southgate Hills Phase 2 sketch, East Victor Road, date, today's date, 8/10/21. Application number 04SK 2021. Whereas the planning board made the following findings a fact, and there are nine. Now therefore be it resolved that regarding the sketch plan application of BRW of Grease LLC, major subdivision entitled Southgate Hills Phase 2 subdivision, drawn by BME Associates, dated June 22, 2021, received by the planning board July 20, 2021, planning one application number 04SK 2021. The planning board acknowledges the receipt of a complete sketch plan application. And be it further resolved that the planning board secretary forward a copy of this resolution to the applicant. No motion on this?
I'll move.
I'll move. Got a second?
Second.
Scott seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This sketch plan is deemed complete. This is not an approval of the project, just want everybody out there to know that. There's going to be more to come.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Where do these things go, edit? All right, our last item is a referral from the Town Board. Stone Brook Subdivision Overlay Reclassification, 1403 East Victor Road, Woodstone Custom Homes. Incorporated to reclassify 1403 East Victor Road from a residential overlay District A to a residential overlay District C. The parcel is 115 acres, with 99 acres in the town of Victor, and the remaining 16 acres in the town of Farmington. Thanks. That's the one I gave me last night. One for you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Smith with Woodstone Custom Homes, and with me tonight is Lucas Bushen, and we, and he's with Marathon Engineering. And as you know, this is, we've been referred from the Town Board to the planning board for your input. We, as somewhat followed Reedman recently, we have petitioned the Town Board for the greater density of our land we have under contract, which, as you just stated, is about 115 acres. It is to the north of Southgate. It is adjacent to Boca Estates, and also some commercial property on Route 96. And also, it basically, the boundary largely follows Mud Creek to the east and to the north. We're proposing in this concept sketch that you see, and there are two, I think there's two videos tonight, the one that shows the concept, and then there's also one that shows an overlying density, which you have handouts for. The intent with the density. The intent with the density handout was to indicate to you how we're a little bit different than the Southgate area Because our parcel does have commercial property to the north. And it also has quite a dense development to the west and north, the Boca Estates. Where a C overlay would produce one unit per acre. We don't plan that density. Our concept sketch here is kind of a maximum. It is likely that we would reduce it a little bit still. So we're probably in the 80 to 90 range of lots. Once we fine-tune the width of lots, right now the concept shows in the 80 to 100-foot wide lots. And they range, some of them are well over 200 feet deep. The Sunray Crest, which is part of Boca Estates, would be extended to a cul-de-sac, and then we would loop back to East Victor Road With the two interior streets. So a big plus would be to end Hammerhead that's in Sunray Crest now And have a looped street back to the East Victor Road area. Our intention would be, if the town is willing to accept it, Is to add our about 70 total acres. About 45 of that is, 55, excuse me, is in the town of Victor and 15 is in the town of Farmington. We would like that to go to the towns so that it could, the towns could appreciate the nature preserve that exists there. We took an evening walk yesterday to show some members of the boards The fact that there are existing trails there. Mud Creek is really quite an interesting asset that the towns have. And if we were to dedicate that acreage that's shown in green, It would be added to the town acreage that is behind Boca Estates, Sunray Crest specifically. With the intention that basically there could be additional trail systems off the Auburn Trail. And they could loop back to Sunray or back to our own new streets. We differ some from Southgate because we feel that this is more of a transitional area. And as much as Boca is 1.8 units, We would be 0.9 or less units. And then Southgate is 0.5 units, and as we go further south, Blumott is 0.3 As the rest of the rural areas there. So it seems to be, to us anyway, a natural progression. And I know one of the previous board meetings we were in, even though Boca is in a B overlay, It is almost twice the density of a C overlay. So that, I guess the overlay was made after that development happened. But we are currently in A overlay. The comprehensive plan and the draft sewer plan, both are very supportive of increasing the density of this site. It has immediate access to gravity sewer. It has an appropriate access to the Auburn Trail and a good road network to Bouton Hill. So that, I'm not quite sure why, even back in the days that the overlay was formed, why it ever was a A area, quite honestly. It seems to be a natural area to fit with the commercial zones to the north and to the density that's immediately surrounding it. So We have, the widths, I think we spoke of that were in the 80 to 100. It'd be more than both the adjacent developments on the average. I think Sunray is in the 70, and as you heard, Southgate's in the 80 to 90. So we're here for your input. We're hoping that, similar to your support for Southgate, Adding some greater density in this area would be a positive. We think that the Area, the natural preserve area of the Mud Creek is an important asset that the town could utilize. It would be a long-term development, certainly just mostly for the trail system. But I think it's an important asset to recognize. Lucas would be here for technical questions, if there are some, and maybe the overall questions I could field as well.
Well, first, Ed, do you have any input from the town board on this? Okay.
Right, and we're scheduled for a public hearing, I believe, the 23rd of August, that the town board has scheduled.
Al, you want to? Name and?
I did have the pleasure of going on the site walk yesterday, and it's certainly a very nice property and definitely agree that the The Mud Creek is a, you know, A nice area. It would be nice to be able to preserve that. I'm not opposed to increased density, but A to C may just be Maybe a little too aggressive. Perhaps B might be a
Well, that, you know, admittedly, we recognize that. I mean, I think, you know, there's nothing in between. There's an A, B, and a C, and there's pretty large jumps in between the B and the C. I would be pleased to work with the planning board in trying to pin down that number. The issue, to some extent, is the cost-effectiveness and density will clearly help make the project work. So that, we haven't done extensive analytical work on it in terms of cost-benefit. It's, quite honestly, very difficult today because pricing on everything is just so hectic that you really don't know what you're getting into some days. But the very early examination of the parcel, I think the 80 to 90 worked well. Whether it would work any less than that, I honestly don't know. But it's certainly, we don't intend 100 units here. And we don't, quite honestly, as I mentioned earlier, this was kind of a maximum density scenario. If we said, you know, what would work? We want to keep the open space that we're required to keep. We want to make the streets cost-effective in terms of length and width of lots. Clearly, 92 is a max, and I would think 80 to 90 is probably a realistic range that would work. And that's in between a B and a C, kind of.
Kind of a B-plus.
A B-plus. B-plus-plus, maybe, a little bit.
But that's my only comment at this time.
Good job.
My comment is generally on density here. And there's a little bit of traffic flow concerns I have with Sunray Crest residents being right now at a No outlet situation. As soon as you do that, you're going to get everybody coming down East Victor Road that wants to go back in there or right through Sunray Crest into your Section of the development. But I feel this should be a B, not a C. And yes, Jeff, I think we can work with numbers here, but I think that it is too dense For this area. You're not next to a village where you'd expect the highest density. And I know you're adjacent technically to the commercial property, but you're separated by Mud Creek.
Creek, that's correct.
And, you know, that Conservation area, which you'll be.
But logistically, very, as you mentioned, we have the roads out quickly lead to The 96 corridor, which is all commercial within a meter of a mile or two. And quickly lead, quite honestly, to the Bouton Hill and quite dense Farmington areas. And so one of the things that we admittedly would like to promote is that You're in Victor schools and you're in Victor Town. And you're, versus having to be pushed out into Farmington for this size lot. And in terms of, and even in terms of price point, I don't think it'll be too much different than what we've been successful at. Which, even though it's expensive, it's typical now in the 400-plus range. You just can't do anything else. But, and that's one point, is that the little bit greater density does make a little bit more affordable home. There's just no question about that. And that's become a problem in particularly the southeast towns.
That's all I got for the moment, Ernie.
Hey, Scott.
I think your colored handouts are very helpful in understanding what you're trying to do.
Lucas was responsible for that.
Good job.
Of course, I did edge him a little bit towards it, but
It makes it very understandable, your request, that is. Question I had was the land that is in Farmington. I think you said it was 15 acres, is that right? Is that part of the density calculation?
No, it's not. No, our density is strictly within that Victor 99 acres. And we are totally ignoring that 15 acres. If we work through an increase in the overlay definition, We will be going to the town of Farmington and obviously discussing, we're assuming that they would Would like that property because it's adjacent to Artenzia Park. But it is not included in our calculations at all.
Okay. And I think I'm Looking at your project, I think it's well thought out. But I too agree that the density is pretty dense, and I think it's a leap From A to C.
Of course, now, I know this is hard to remind people all the time, but You know, the comprehensive plan was a great effort of the town and was passed after years of deliberation. And it clearly was recommended in the comprehensive plan that this was an area that would be appropriate from A to C. And also, as I understand the language of this draft sewer plan, It also is pretty much saying the same thing. And I think part of that is that Following availability of sewer and looking at a reality, a realistic build-out in the town, That you should focus areas that are best to put those units. And, you know, this would be a clustering development. I would prefer, and I think most planners would prefer, to see clustered rather than Rather than having houses just dot the horizon and in the rural areas. And that, so, I mean, there's some history to that recommendation, A to C, but I know there is a resistance to it. But that's why we wanted a B-plus-plus, maybe.
I see. Wes, is there, can you maybe give me a little history on the Comprehensive plan that we're speaking of, and what does it say and how was this site considered?
That's a fair
Regarding his comment?
Yeah, that's a fair question. And Jeff, I appreciate your comments on the comprehensive plan, and I'll give you what my understanding was of, You know, when I'm thinking back to the comprehensive plan when it was adopted in 2015 And what the discussions were regarding that conceptual future land use map. As you might recall, and I could bring it up if we need to see it or if anybody wants to see it. But there was some color coding with that conceptual future land use map That showed areas that the town would consider increasing residential density. And then there were also some colors on that map that considered and contemplated decreasing residential density. So yes, this area was recommended on that conceptual future land use map to jump from an A to a C. However, I think one of the things that maybe some people are thinking or remembering or contemplating is that You know, that map also identified areas, you know, I think it was understood or Contemplated that, well, these are areas where we can increase residential density. And on the same token, we're, you know, the town identified areas potentially where they would reduce density. So there was a bit of a trade-off when that map was developed, right? I think it was kind of, maybe not necessarily a net zero. But I understand now that the town board kind of has taken a position saying that They really don't want to decrease residential density anywhere. But they're still willing to look on a case-by-case basis at increasing density. And You know, so does that conceptual future land use map still apply in the same essence as was originally Kind of drafted and adopted? You know, does the town still want to make the exact same increase in density if they're not going to be decreasing in density elsewhere? That's kind of the way I'm thinking as a planner and kind of the way I remember the conversations going During the planning process for that conceptual map.
But Wes, isn't it true now, as I understand the draft sewer plan, That that's trying to integrate some of those thoughts and bringing it to the reality of The cost-effectiveness of maintaining sewer systems and whether they're pump stations or gravity. And one of the focuses there is that, to the extent you can encourage gravity development, which we can here, Then that, at least as I read the draft plan, that was why they supported that increased density, the comprehensive plan in some of these areas that could be well-soared. And realistically, in the long run, I think there's going to be a natural tendency not to The build-out scenarios, I don't think they're realistic when you start getting into the rural areas, anyway. With the lack of potentially good percolation for septic and the lack of water, They're never going to reach those intended densities in the southern portion of Bouton Hill. I mean, there's not going to be reality, in which case, I don't disagree that they were saying you could reduce some, but I think they'll be naturally reduced, anyway. And that's
Yeah, that's a good point. I can also give a little perspective on the site walk that, you know, I participated in yesterday. Just my personal observations. You know, I was really kind of taken at the vastness and the size of the 99 acres, you know. I thought I had a general idea looking at an aerial map, and, you know, I think I did, but being out there, to me, And maybe it has to do with the particular neighborhood I live in, not too far away from here. But the, you know, 80 or 90 homes, that seems To me, that seems very doable. However, you know, I do have some concerns with regard to traffic, right, on East Victor Road. I understand, because I sometimes take East Victor Road to 96 and try to take a left towards the Village, and that can be difficult sometimes. And I think at some point, You know, in considering the development that's happened on East Victor Road where we haven't yet had traffic studies. For example, Southgate Hills One, you know, that didn't really warrant a traffic study that I recall. But now we've got Southgate Hills Two, and maybe some of the development from Blumott, maybe they'll go on East Victor Road. But I suppose they would use Bouton Hill Road the most, and then, you know, The increase, the potential number of units here might warrant a traffic study, and maybe that would You know, I don't know if that's something that would be required Wait until the planning board looks at a subdivision application, or if maybe the town board might want to request a traffic study As they consider this particular density increase. Maybe that's something that we could reach out to the town's traffic consultant on CPL. We could talk to Jennifer McNevich.
Regarding the sanitary sewer And the capacity issue presently, is that something that you see easily overcome, or Going to be a perpetual problem?
Well, we're looking, again, Not only, we're looking at Pump Station Seven with not only The potential increase with Southgate Hills Two, but also this particular project. However, this particular project that Mr. Smith is presenting Could maybe connect into a 24-inch main sewer, 24-inch sewer main that does not go to Pump Station Seven at all. But that's going to require maybe some consultation with the town of Farmington. I think you've already got some information, and there's an easement.
When the owners of this parcel granted the easement for that 24-inch main, there was in the deed and in the easement That they would have the right to tie into that, to connect to that sewer. Now, I don't know whether we have to press a legal right, but as I understand from Whether it went to Jack Maron directly or whatever, there was some hesitancy of Farmington to do that. Farmington to do that. On the other hand, there's also legal record that said that the easement was granted and with the intention that the owner and their subsequent owners could tie into it. So, you know, I think there will need, what I said actually to Lucas just today, that, that I think, and maybe they can't be separated, but I was initially thinking that we should get a reading from the town board, towns, planning board, conservation board, town board, whether this increased density is appropriate. And if it is, then I think then we need to start making sure that the details with Farmington, et cetera. I mean, we would understand, and it may very well be inappropriate for us to develop. If we're forced to use Pump Station 7, I don't even know if this land could get there by gravity to begin with. So that realistically, that's not going to work for us. The intention and the owner's intention throughout this period of time was that they, when they granted that easement, they were granted the right to tie into that 24-inch sewer. So I'm sure, even if we don't make a big deal of it, they probably will. So, you know, my, my thoughts to Lucas was, well, let's first see what the town feels about density. If they don't want the density, then why, why talk about it? Because realistically, this property is not going to be well-developed at a .33 density. It just, it, it would be unfair to the homeowners in terms of value, and, and it wouldn't make for a good subdivision, quite honestly. It, it, it's an appropriate parcel for denser development. And I, and I believe that I think this sewer could, is readily available. I mean, it runs right in the back lawns of that cul-de-sac you see there. It crosses Mud Creek near, I don't know, not, not, not the car dealership, but near, near the Otto Tomatoes, I think, is, that's about where it goes out.
I guess I have more questions. One is, are your lot sizes then fairly close to what I see here on Fieldcrest Lane and Sunray Crest?
No, they would be, we're looking at 80 to 100 feet wide and 150 to 250 feet deep. So you're probably looking at a 20,000 square foot lot on the average, maybe.
A little bit larger then, than your neighbor?
It was definitely larger than what the immediate areas, yes.
Well, I appreciate knowing that.
And that's our, our point, even in our report submission to the town board, our lot sizes are greater than not only Suncrest, but also on typical Southgate as well.
Okay. I have no more questions.
I appreciate your discussion about the economics of a subdivision. I tend to count boxes on the map, right? So I appreciate that. And the, the offset in my mind to the, to the density question is the creativity, I guess, of dedicated parkland being part of the proposal. And if we talk about the comprehensive plan, certainly the density overlays are a piece of it. And the other piece is the discussion about the people, or the reason people want to come and live in Victor is sort of the rural nature of things. And I would be totally in favor of this if I was assured that both towns would be willing to dedicate or take the dedication of the properties. I look at the, the, the natural trails there. I imagine Victor hiking trails would be kind of salivating for an opportunity to, to work with that. So I think the key to my support of this would be the, the willingness of both towns to dedicate the, accept the dedication of the land.
Well, and quite honestly, that was always our interest as well, because it's, you know, even the owner, current owners were saying, well, you put the houses right there on the cliff looking down. And I said, no. I said, you know, our intent was to really keep a lot of that preserved and, and, and very accessible to the neighbor, because it's a, it's a unique environment there. Mud Creek, always, even when you drive along Bouton Hill and you cross Mud Creek, it's a beautiful creek, stone-lined, and it's stone-lined for much of that mile that it's on this property. And then there are some actually quite steep banks. We didn't, when Wes was walking it yesterday, we didn't get to the, but to the south of Route 96, there's quite, there's some bank areas there. They're quite interesting as well. But I, I, yes, I think it would be a very, a great asset to this community and potentially Sunray Crest and, and Southgate as well. And also, we, we've been, we picked up the last section of Dorchester Park, and the lots there, it sold out almost entirely this year. And we found that one of the very interesting features of it was the access to Auburn Trail. And that a number of people were moving there very specifically because of it, that we're going to have a couple of trails that connect one to the Pepperone Drive Park and then one to the Auburn Trail directly. And that, that's the reason why many of them moved there. And, and so knowing that, and I guess looking at the potential here, too, of accessing that, the strength of the Auburn Trail and with a little bypass kind of thing in terms of, it's not ever going to be a big stone-lined walk, but it clearly is a very interesting walk throughout that green space.
And as a side note, the dedication takes away a lot of the complexities involved, if you will, with conservation easements and people not understanding, et cetera, et cetera. So that's a win in that area as well.
You're right. And, and actually, we, I've, in our more recent developments, I've shied away from trying to do the common thing of, you know, go halfway back your lawn and draw imaginary line and say you can't go either. So we've stopped doing that, and we largely give that area to like one owner, so they know it's private property. And you, you just don't go walking there and mowing there and everything else. And, and it's worked very well.
Very good, thank you.
I think it's time to take a straw vote here.
Can I just ask one more question?
Go ahead.
Is, is the limit of your clustered layout, the light green, is it, is it established largely because of the topography or?
That was partly because of the, we are excluding that 15 acres in Farmington, so we are very strictly adhering to the 50% open space as well. So the light green is defined partly to meet the requirement of that 99-acre development. I mean, of only developing half of that 99 acres. So that, that light green acre, that light green is the calculation of our developed density areas, and all the dark green would be the open space.
So you're holding to that component? You're holding to the 50%?
Yes, oh yeah.
I think that's, well, that's important for you to know.
Yeah, we, we never wavered on that.
Okay.
And that was within that Victor true calculation. As I mentioned, we did not calculate, and we did not include the 15 acres in Farmington calculation, even though Bob Bringley wanted to.
I'll bet he did.
For the record, Bob, and I said, no.
That's why I asked the question.
Well, you're right. I mean, we wanted to be honest to the town.
Not to hear the sun all night, because we've been here two hours now, so I think it's time to...
And to wrap it up.
Retire.
But, who wants to go first?
What are you looking for, Ernie?
Your opinion on this density issue.
Okay, I, I am for the reduction or the increase in density if the towns are willing to accept dedication of the, of the open space.
Okay.
I think you did a good job presenting what you have here. You really did. I understand all the things that you're saying, and if I were in your shoes, I would do exactly the same thing. I would, I would agree with Joe.
Joe, Lowen?
I assume you meant Joe Limbeck.
Yes, Joe Limbeck.
I am struggling, honestly, with the density going from A to C. I think it should be somewhat less dense than you're proposing. That's my opinion.
And I would agree with Joe's comments.
And I do, too. I think going up to, all the way up.
Again, we're willing to compromise on that. I guess it's, I'm not sure whether halfway in between a B and a C works at 75 units. You know, we're, we're hoping that, that the dedication of the town land, et cetera, et cetera, can get us up closer to that 90. But what, we didn't ever intend to go to 100, so that, so it's a, it's definitely...
Do a B+.
A B+ would, would, well, that implies 75, which may not be enough. I mean, it's, we're, we're in that neck of the woods, yes. And, and quite honestly, I don't know whether the opportunity, well, to some extent, it was the case with Southgate. The approval, the town board approved of the higher B density, but still said it would be planning board's prerogative in terms of defining what those ultimate numbers were. So that unfortunately is our, really our only option here. We have A, B, or C, so B's, I know it's not going to make it. So it's, it's whether the town board could approve the higher density with a stipulation that the planning board would have to then decide what calculation makes sense within that. And quite honestly, I'm not quite sure how you will do that. I mean, you know, you can say, as I heard it on the town board, well, from A to C is just too much. Well, what's enough, then? I, I mean, then you, but I understand both sides.
Okay. We will get the minutes to the town board. When are you meeting with them?
23rd.
Going that quickly?
23rd, right.
We can get you the minutes before the 23rd.
23rd. 23rd. I'll look at my calendar, but I think it's the 23rd.
Okay, thanks, Ed.
Well, thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Al, particularly you going for the walk, we definitely appreciate it. And Ernie, I know you would have done it if you didn't have that thing all over you.
Exactly right.
You did. I think you made it about 50 feet, right?
I made 50 feet?
I don't, well, I wasn't there when you dropped out, but I...
Wish I didn't drop out.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, no more business, and entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, that's Joe Limbeck.
I'll suck it.
Scott beat you to it. All in favor?
Aye. Lisa?